I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance, the flags and the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you for coming, everybody. Hope everyone, nobody looked at the sun today. We're in trouble. So, lily goggles? Roll call.
Sandy Cooper?
Here.
Krista Regan?
Here.
Arty Bryson?
Here.
Christie Hilton?
Here.
Cindy Valentine?
Here.
Joanne Shurkey?
Absolute excuse.
Mark Fisher?
Here.
Okay. Moving on, we've got some public hearings. And what we have to do, just so everyone knows, we've got to make a motion to open the public hearing and then hold it and then make a motion to close it and do that. We've got to do them one at a time. So, I will make a motion. We open up the public hearing for a special assessment on the police department village?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support at 7:01. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, this time I'll open up the public hearing for our special assessment for our police village. It's not changing one bit. So, it's staying the same. No increase whatsoever, but this is what we have to do every year to renew it, so. Does anyone have any comments about our police and our public or our village for that?
What is the mileage?
Uh... It's 4.35, I believe. Yep, 4.35 mils. Down further. Okay, hearing, no public comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the... Or actually, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing for our special assessment on our police village at 7:03.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, I'll make a motion to... For our public hearing for our special assessment for our fire department village?
7:03?
Uh, need support. Yeah, 7:03.
Support.
Any laws of support? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing for our special assessment on our fire department village, which is not changing, and that is 1.625 mils. So, have any public comments?
Come on up, microphone.
Kelly Nader, 7203 Audubon. I just wanted to know, when was the last time it was the fire department village was changed? And what was it, when we changed it? And I'd actually like to get an answer on the police, if possible.
Uh, I... The place has been the same since I've been in office. It's never changed. The fire went up two years ago, two or three, three years ago, I believe. From 1.5 to 1.625.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, police did go down. Actually, in 2008, that administration dropped the police from 4.5 to 4.35, and the fire went from 1.625 down to 1.5. But then, like I said, two years, three years ago, I believe it was, we raised the fire back up to 1.625.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comments with the fire department village? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the fire department village?
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to make a motion to open up the special assessment for our garbage and refuge curbside recycling special assessment at 7:05.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This time, it's now 7:06, I'll may, I'll open up the public hearing for our garbage special assessment.
I'd like to say a few things. I haven't been very happy with our service from our garbage company. I voiced our opinion in the past, and the past month has been very frustrating for me. They were going to have a representative here tonight, and he couldn't make it, but I get more calls every week about issues with garbage than anything else. Five, six minimum, and it's ludicrous that I believe that I have to get so involved in getting our garbage picked up. For instance, there was a special pickup on the Dyke Road, a pile of junk, going on three, four weeks, and I finally had to get involved after two weeks. And I talked to the supervisor, "Okay, are these going to get picked up?" And I don't think so. So, last week, I talked to the manager that is from Flint. I mean, he's worked, he covers the whole state, maybe more. "Okay, are these going to get picked up?" Well, it didn't. I lifted them up today. I really lifted them up big, big time. And then, also, three weeks, I, not today, but three weeks ago, I had complaints of our recycling being mixed in our regular trash, and I questioned them about it, and they said, "No, that's not happening, Arty." So, I had a residence, and I think what it's doing, it's happening more on the smaller streets on the island, because what they're doing is send a small truck and throw the stuff in a smaller truck, and from there, they transfer it into the recycling truck. And I had a resident, two weeks ago, tell me, "Arty, I saw them transferring it in the DNR parking lot into the regular trash truck, not the recycle truck." So, I called him up, and I said, "Hey, look, I got eyewitness." "Yes, Arty, it's new, he messed up, he's been warned." Well, last week, the same thing happened. And this person that, on the island, rode his bike there and saw him, and questioned the driver. And the driver says, "Well, we had to do this because there was a broken hydraulic line." He lied, there's no broken hydraulic line, there's no hydraulic fluid going anywhere." So, I called him up and told him again, you know, this isn't, this is not even... I was very upset, let's put it this way. And I talked to their big boss up in Flint, and I said, "I need an answer." Well, he failed to call me back with an answer. I did talk to some people today. Like I said, I really lit them up. And they, they said, "Well, we got employee problems." I told them, I had a conversation with Chris about this earlier, and we agreed, "It's not employee problem, it's management problems." And, you know, it's, it's, it's an issue. And I, I just, I mean, I don't want to do this, but I, I told them, "You know what? I'm going to be looking at their contract, maybe breaking it." We pay over $700,000 a year just to haul our garbage up to the landfill. For that, I told them, "I think we could buy a couple of garbage trucks and do it ourselves." You know? Hire a couple of people. Not that I want to be in the garbage business, but, you know, or look at some other companies to perform the service. So, I just want to tell everyone, my two cents, I'm not happy with it, and if it doesn't get corrected soon, it's going to, something's going to happen, so. Alright, sorry for venting. Is, any other, anything else on the special assessment for the garbage? The way this is set up, we're only supposed to be able to talk on what is there, and you're just talking about... I mean, I've got, I'd like to say something about the garbage too, but that's, it's not on here, it's about the assessment.
Right, well, there's public comments, you can talk about garbage then.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Alright, any, any more comments about the special assessment on garbage?
John, now's your turn.
No, the, as you said.
Public comments?
Yeah. Hearing now, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, that was a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on garbage.
Okay. Support. We have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? No way. 7:11. Alright, bills payable. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $115,401.8.
Support. Okay, we have a motion to pay bills payable of $115,401.8. And we have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. Mark Fisher? Sandy Cooper? Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We've got to amend the agenda. Yeah. Let's do public comments and we'll amend the agenda. Alright, this time we have public comments. Anyone would like to, okay, come on up, Kathy.
Hi, board, I mean, hi, Arty, and hi trustees. My name's Kathy Harrison.
We can hear you good.
Okay. I live at 301 Monroe on Hurst Island. Arty, the last time I was here for the island board meeting, I asked you about the cutting of the Boys Club grass and the cutting down of the hedges along the Lloyd Channel. You told me that the grass would be cut and that you were already talking to the road commission about removing the hedges altogether. But you yourself said you would just like to see that pulled out, what happened. Second, I would like to know, when are you going to stop letting livable trailers be put on the island? You can ask any old timer that had a house trailer in the 60s, which my parents did, and they were told, and they were moved off, that no more trailers could be brought back on the island. One by one, they're going to be eliminated. Do you want to know what the nickname my street has now? People call it Chateau Monroe, because of all the trailers. Three of the trailers are grandfathered in, they have been built, they have been on our street for 50 to 60 years. The others are not. I'm putting the blame on the township for not nipping this in the bud before it got, it gets out of hand, which I believe it already has. When the trailers came on our street and they weren't moved in a month, the township should have told the owners that they couldn't stay there longer than 72 hours. And I want to know, if the trailer hasn't been moved, where's all that waste going? My taxes are rated R1 residential. I would like to see an ordinance passed like the one in Marine City. The city's ordinance on parking and storing recreational vehicles states that any owner of recreational equipment may park or store such equipment on single-family residential property as long as the recreational equipment parked or stored does not have fixed connections to electricity, water, gas, or sanitary sewer facilities. It can't be used for living or housekeeping purposes. And they ought to be parked to the rear of the front building line of the lot. It cannot be parked longer than 72 hours. You can't pick and choose what you're going to enforce and what you're not going to. Thank you.
Okay, on that, I think, didn't they cut the Boys Club once?
Once.
And I know that we, we have another order to have it done. And we are working on the, on the shrubs. I, I have talked to the road commission about removing those, and they said that they were going to, but it's not a priority on their list, so.
But they still will eventually, you say it?
Yeah. On, on the trailers, I agree with you 100%. I, in fact, I've been trying to get the planning commission to change the ordinance, to, to definitely restrict, you know, what people are doing on, in these trailers. It's happening on the mainland too, but more on the island.
Right.
And it's, it's definitely an issue. So, I agree with you there. Any other public comments? Mitch?
My name is Mitchie Fannin, and I live at 5446 Green Drive. I was here two, two meetings ago to let you know about the house located four doors down from me, owned by Mr. Fred Franzell. I brought to your attention the fact that it is a safety and health hazard, the way it has been deteriorating for the last 10 years. I did notice, just two weeks ago, someone did come and cut the front lawn and did close the window. I went around there today to check the place. They did, there was a gazebo, a large gazebo with overhanging rafters that was falling down on the patio. That was taken down, and it's now all stacked up behind the building. There, so I do appreciate who I've called, Mr. Prab, probably, because I've been calling him on this. So, he started it. So, I went around again today. The window is closed. There is definitely holes in the exterior of the home, and I took pictures of it, and then, that I would really like to share with you. The other thing is, I'm concerned about, is it a homestead? I checked with the office. It is not homestead?
It was, but it was changed to non-homestead.
It is, okay, non-homestead. There is a water line coming out of the ground, attached to another hole in the ground that is bent, and I don't know where that goes. Again, that's a safety issue. There is no fence around this property now, and that is definitely a safety issue, especially when there is a marina right next door, where people can come in and go as they please. And as I mentioned to the board two weeks ago, or two months ago, that there were people sighted inside this house with the TV going at nighttime. So, there should be no one there, absolutely no one. There is a tree that is, a large piece of that, I should say, the willow tree, fallen into the water in the front of the house. And in the back of the house, there is a piece of metal that came from the trusses, either of the bridge or the boat house that is in the water. And this piece of metal is in the canal, and Mr. Benson had his boat out two weeks ago, and it's underwater, this piece of metal, and scratched up the whole side of his boat. He's a bass fisherman, so it's a lower, lower boat. So, there's two pieces of metal hanging out in the, in the canal there, which tears us from using that entrance back and forth. And because of the high water, that's about the only way some people can get their boat out. Mr. Bettsen approached Mr. Franzell last week, because he, I understand he was on the property, and asked him if he had insurance, and he got no response. He also asked Mr. Franzell for his phone number and his address, so he could direct his insurance to him personally, and got no response. So, the gentleman is a problem, the property is a bigger problem. And like I said two months ago, I'm really tired of living in an area that's supposed to be well-kept. It's very poorly kept. And there are critters in there. Pictures show that there are holes underneath the doors and in the foundation, so.
Can you give me those pictures with the holes? Can you email them?
Yeah, I can, I'll try.
Or, or copy them and bring them to, drop them off?
Okay.
Because that, that's actually...
It's a health issue.
Well, it's safe, you can do, we can do something with dangerous building on, on holes in the structure. It's...
I will. Is there some way that I can make contact with him legally?
Between you and him.
But I can, I can get it from the township, his address?
That's public information, yeah.
Okay, fine.
But, one thing I know, I mean, if, if there's, if there's just no, if there's no, like...
There's no flashing?
Right.
You know, up here?
See, that's under property maintenance, and we, we don't have a property maintenance ordinance, so to speak. Are you familiar with that type of thing, Chris? I mean, how's we here?
How blight, what's the word, blighting?
Well, lights jump around the house, but with, when it comes to the structure itself, we can, we can take a lot of action if it's a dangerous building. In other words, there's holes in the wall, or the structure's going to fall down or something. But if there's just, just drywall on the outside, it's, you know, we, we can't really, dangerous building, that. A lot of places, they, they do a property maintenance ordinance, where you have to have some type of, of proper siding or wood up.
What about safety issues? With this no fence around this property? And you're right on the canal.
Well, that's between him and his insurance company.
Which he probably has not.
Well, I don't know. So, if someone goes on his property, I mean, that would be a civil thing between that person and him. And, you know, they, they'd have to hash it out. You could say you're trespassing, you know?
Well, I appreciate what you have done so far, and I'd like you to keep an eye on it. He still has not covered or cut the front part of his property, that would be from the canal to the road. And his driveway is, you can't get in there because of the debris all the way up. So, I can check with the, about his address, his phone number, and to see if he has a water bill?
I don't know if we have a phone number, but, yeah, but we can get the address.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thanks, man.
Ted Mailer, 92, North Channel. I just want to beat the Boys Club up again. They did cut it, and, put it in perspective, I believe they cut it Memorial Day weekend. That was three months ago, almost. Right now, there are buildings that are open. I don't know what's, nobody's, doesn't look like anybody's using it, but the doors are open. And it, it's blight. And when they did cut the grass, they didn't cut it all, they just, you know, you just... And who, do we know who the owner is? Is it a receivership? Is something going on there?
Well, all's I could, all's we know is under management of a new property management company. And we kind, we, we just got that information after, you know, I talked to you, Kathy. And they sent a guy out with a brush hog. They, I mean, they, they literally had to look it up on Google Map while we're on the phone with them, to see what they, they're managing. And they just sent a guy out with a brush hog, and he didn't do a very good job. He knows that. And, and I know we just had conversations with them last week about, you know, doing it better. In fact, they, they skipped the, or they didn't cut around the house when they, when they did that, you know, that yellow house, JD's old house.
Yeah.
They, they missed that. I think they came and cut that finally.
I think that was, that was it.
Right. And, and so they know that they're supposed to come back and cut it, you know? We've never worked with this new management company, and, and I've also had conversations with them about the lovely evergreens along the road, the nice border there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, we don't know if it's going to be on an auction someday?
No idea.
Okay. Thanks.
Dave Brothers, Great Highway. I've got a question. Everybody's been complaining about speeding on the island, and I was just wondering, since we do have police officers on the island a lot of times, how many speeding tickets have been issued on the island since the first of the year?
Actually, Arty had brought this up to me earlier, and I went through and I pulled our stats. I pulled them back until...
Grab the mic, Mike.
Grab the mic. TV land, can you hear you, Arty? I did take and hold the stats as far as for just the island itself, went back to July 1st. And since July 1st, we've had 39 traffic stops on the island, of which we've written eight citations. The citations is something that, you know, I leave up to my officers with their discretion. Now, mind you, especially a lot of time with the officers, if it's residents of the island, they're going to use their discretion and give a warning. Pretty much is what we got, is the warnings. If they stop them again, then it becomes a different story. But if you do see any problem areas, if there are problem areas that you see more of it, then I urge you, give us a call, let us know, because then we can, we can focus patrol to those certain areas.
I'll wait for them to turn around the walkers, it's like a speedway there.
And we've, actually, that's one of the areas that we wrote most of the citations on Great Highway. But if you are experiencing, you're seeing a lot of it, we will absolutely make a point of getting out there and trying to do more enforcement to try to shut it down. We also just received a new radar trailer that, believe it or not, it, it has really helped in a lot of areas and gives us a little better idea. We've been trying to pop it in different areas throughout the island and the mainland, and it, it also creates its own statistics. So, we're able to go back after leaving it out for a few days, and we can tell exactly what the speeds were, at what times they were. So, kind of give us an idea, what are some of the areas that, that we need to try to, at different times, that we need to hit these areas. But I urge anybody, if you're seeing a problem in any particular area, give us a call at the station, let us know, and we will definitely address it. And we've got a big township here, you know, we're only running a few cars on the road. So, if, if we do get your input from it, then we can, we can kind of target those specific areas and see what we can do to address the problem and to shut it down from there. But biggest thing I say is I urge you, you know, please give us a call and let us know.
Thanks, Mike. Any other public comments?
Donna Hall, Cagl, 898 North Channel Drive. I was wondering if you could please update the, so what is going on with the case involved in Gerald Page against our township? I have not seen or heard anything, and I'd just like to know where that's going.
Yeah, that's currently in litigation. Right now, we really can't comment on it.
Okay, so there are no court dates, or nothing available for the public right now, whatsoever?
Nothing available, yeah.
Okay. The other question, or the other statement I wanted to make is, I also agree, that their public comments should also be available at the end of the meetings. I have attended many other meetings in Oakland Township, where I originally resided in, and there are a lot of issues that are under either new or unfinished business, that I feel the public should be able to make comments on, and that you should really reconsider what was years ago always available to the public to comment on. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments, John? I think so. Or grab the mic either. Or just grab the mic and sit back down.
Okay, John Horvath, 2040 Gold Course. I don't know, this confuses me terribly, and I was on the board a long time. But am I to speak to all of the issues all the way down, when I don't even know? It's like I see something there with Barbara. The assessor going to change something that's wrong?
Well, it makes sense to speak before we bring it up, because after the fact, we make a decision, and then what, your comments?
Okay, but see, I have no idea what that, what that means. I see something there from the boats. Why are we getting involved with Algenac? That's what I'm saying.
Well, they asked, I'll, I'll explain that, they asked.
Well, you know how I feel about that.
Right, and that, that, I mean, they've been opening that up for public comment, too.
And then, the other thing was the garbage. I know I shouldn't. I know I shouldn't do it, but when I see somebody down there at the dumpsters that I don't know, and I've only been here 62 years, so if I don't know, I challenge them. And the guy, I just stopped the guy the other day, and he's from McDonald Island, and he said he gets a letter from you that gives him authority to dump there.
They can dump where the Mill Channel party store was now, because the garbage container got kicked out of being...
I understand.
And you read the signs now, it says All Out Islands.
Okay, then you just changed them?
About three weeks ago.
Okay, I didn't see it three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And I mean, I don't care, because I'm not on the board anymore. But people still call me, and that really ticks me off, Argy.
I can't tell that they call you. Don't call John.
I've given everybody's name and number. And I have everyone, they're on a sheet. They walk in my shop, and I say, here, here's your group.
Okay, any other public comments?
Callie Nader, 7203 Autobahn. I was going to bring up the public comments also, as of what last November, it was at the beginning and the end, which was kind of nice. But if we're only going to have one, couldn't we just have it at the end? I've seen people, this is the second meeting here, and also on the mainland, people have requested the public comments at the end. Just feel like we have a voice.
We could, I mean, Elginac School Board, Elginac City Council, St. Clair County, they all do it in the beginning. It's pretty much in St. Clair County, countywide, they do it in the beginning. Reason being is sometimes we have long meetings, and I've had people walk out, and they said, I wanted to comment to the board, but I didn't want to wait an hour and a half for your meeting to get over with. And also that. And like I say, if you have comments on anything that we're going to talk about, you should comment before we discuss it and make a decision, so the board knows about it and can make an informed decision, rather than after the fact.
We don't even know what's going to come up ahead, but I think Algonac has it in the beginning and the end.
I don't know. I have to double check.
I know it at quite a few of their meetings, but I do know it doesn't seem to be... I don't know, like, pretty sure. The other thing is, that radar trailer, what if we wanted... Is there a request, like if, you know, I live on Autobahn, the first house, and they come off M-29?
Yeah, call them up.
You could sometime reserve it?
Yeah, absolutely. Give us a call. If they're having a party down there, we can reserve it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none. Move right along to the consent agenda. Want to grab that mic?
I'd like to make a motion to approve amending the agenda to add to this number eight payment to the St. Clair County Public Works for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda for payment of our sinking fund for the drinking water revolving fund program, it's called. It's basically the bond payment for the upgrade to the Elginac water plant that was done in the year 2000. So we have motion and support to amend the... It'll be, what, eight under new business?
Number two, yeah.
Yeah, we got support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, consent agenda. Cindy?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes of the board meeting of August 7th, 2017, and synapses. Special board meeting of August 7th, 2017, and synapses. Check reports, July code enforcement, road watch, H-2117, communication, Safety Town for Clay Township, and requests from the treasurer, BSNA training, September 27th and 28th for $410. The clerk, BSNA training, September 27th, $205. Assessors continuing education, November 3rd, 2017, $50 each. And police hire part-time officer, James O'Hanlon.
Okay, we have motion and support. Is everyone good with everything on there, or do we need to pull anything out? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, supervisors report. Let's see, the light that's going on top of the Colony Tower should be installed this week. The LED light that we wanted to put up on there has been backordered, so that should be showing up soon. MDOT, we had a problem about three weeks ago, well, after we had that real heavy rain, we had some flooding near our township hall. And there was three bad cross culverts that was under an M-29. MDOT, or actually, the county came out, they saw it was an issue. I was able to get them out about 11 o'clock that night. And there definitely was some issues. And they were actually out, I think it was Thursday or Friday, I can't remember, Thursday. And they flushed them out as best they could. There was definitely a lot of debris in there, and there's... These three culverts are actually the old clay culvert. You know, all of the rest of them are that rigid, either metal galvanized or that rigid plastic. And they're going to end up replacing them, hoping that they hold, especially the one right across the township hall. They make it till we get the pipe here, and so we're watching them pretty closely. But we definitely have a problem, and it definitely caused some flooding a couple, three weeks ago when we had all that rain. Let's see, we're actually, we're doing a lot of work and getting ready for the audit Still looking to obtain some labor through Michigan Works. If you know of anybody that's over 55 years old, and I'm not sure exactly what the criteria is with low income, Michigan Works will actually hire them and give us 19 hours of free... It's no cost to the township. And so we're looking for a light... Someone to do light janitorial stuff, and then some office work, two positions. So if you know anybody that's over 55 that wants some 19 hours a week, and, right Kathy, we'll hook you up.
How many jobs I already have?
Yeah. And get in contact with us. And it'll probably end up to be like a three, four-year gig is what I'm talking with MI Works, so. Good news for the island, we added a concert through our parks and rec, you know, and in conjunction with Elginac, we do music in the park. And we had a last one over there, and I think Cindy Valentine and Babish were talking about it, and they knew I would agree to it. So it's going to, actually, it's on the agenda, but this coming Thursday, in Brownsfield, we're bringing into stage, we got a really fun band coming there. So I hope everyone attends, and we have a good turnout. There will be more. It's called Ten... No. Ten Ocean Drive? Ten Beach Drive. Ten Ocean Beach Drive. Fun band. So it's going to be, sorry, at 6:00, and I'm actually, we're going to be talking about it, so that's redundant. We are still working on getting Wi-Fi in the park. I had met with them here about, I think, Thursday, and told them how I think it should be done, so they're looking at it. Just want to let the board know that the DDA did approve for me to buy up to... Spend up to $15,000 on kitchen equipment for the concession stand in the park. Shopped it pretty good. I got most of it delivered, and I actually did it for about 10 grand, so I'm sure the DDA will be... Glad to hear that. And as soon as the Health Department signs off on it, we're hoping to have that open at least on weekends to get it going. I'm sure George will make mention of it, but I wrapped off this last August 12th, and it went smoothly, as can be expected. And I've been actually doing a lot of work with, or starting to get ramped up with help of Chris O'Regan on the dangerous buildings and getting some of those buildings taken off. I think we got two or three on the island. I want to warn them, one of the Mill Channels, actually, on a boat, can't get to it by car, okay? So, but we've got a lot down Anchor Bay Drive and a few others. And I know Sid's looking at about 10 or 12 more structures right behind it. He's kind of waiting for us to get moving on this. I just want to reiterate, too, I've asked the state police to do a local ordinance change, it's called, to reduce the speed limit on Falkirk from 50 to 35, and also to make the corner of Nook and Fruit a four-way stop. In two weeks' span, I think we had four accidents there, and they were... They weren't small accidents, they were big accidents. And I don't know if anyone's been down Falkirk Road lately, but a lot of building going down there, and in a year's time, it's all going to be houses both sides. There's going to be a lot more people walking, their dogs riding bikes. And for people to go 50 miles an hour on that road, that's, in my opinion, is a little too fast, so. Upcoming events. Our consumer education series continuing in Harson's Island. We've been getting good turnouts for those. Tuesday, September 19th, is in-home care and senior citizens residence. And that starts at 7:00 at Reeder's Cove. Tuesday tomorrow, actually, in the Clay Park, the Elginac Clay Historical Society's having their picnic. Starts at 5:00 and food's at 6:00, right when I get off of work. So I'm going to head over there. And it's about an $8 donation, and bring a lawn chair if you want, but that's a fun group, and I'll be over there, get some liquor chicken, and I think that's what they serve. Music, oh, we talked about music in the park. And again, that starts at 6:00 and runs at 8:00 or a little bit later. I said Mosquito 30. That's a good time to quit. And Clay Township Youth Team Tennis League is actually, it's been going great. We have 16 players signed up for it, and so we're teaching a lot of little guys how to play tennis. Let's see, where am I? Safety Tykes, September 16th. It's going to be a program that we're holding in the park, and it's geared for toddlers to four-year-olds. We already did a safety event for the five to, what was it, eight? Five to eight-year-old kids. That Safety Town, that was a huge success. But we're having an event in the park for the little guys. And it's going to be a lot of fun, it's going to be busy. We have the Paw Patrol coming in, and all their characters, there's three of them, Sky, Chase, and Marshall. And I don't know, anyone that has little kids, they know who these people are. And we got Roscoe the Clown coming, he's cool. And the Clay Fire and Police are going to be there, and it should be a really good event, and that's sponsored 100% by Nickel Saff, our insurance company. And yeah, we've got some other stuff coming, too. The Scrapmobile, is it? No, that's, okay, I'm getting confused.
It's just a meeting for you, all of our public...
Yeah. And we have yoga in the park, Tuesday, the 29th. One-time deal, 5:30 to 5:45 to 6:45, five bucks a person. And that's kind of a precluder to, we're having a yoga class starting September 19th. That's a six-week class. It's going to be at Millside Elementary, it's $45 a person. Or if you just want to do a drop-in for one class, it's 10 bucks. And again, that's at 6:30, 7:30 at Millside. Also doing Zuma Fitness, six-week class starting at Wednesday, 6:30 to 7:30, and that's also at Millside, it's $42 a person. And it includes salsa, merengue, hip-hop, belly dance, and all kinds of good stuff. Elginac Art Fair, Saturday, Sunday, Labor Day. That's always a fun event. And we cannot forget about our turkey shoot also, right here, Labor Day weekend. Parade Saturday, right? And it's a fun-filled event. And I did want to mention our... This is the second time we're doing this. This is going to end up being a big event. It's our Scarecrow Festival. The date is October 28th, Saturday, from 12 to 5, Clay Township Park. And we have all kinds of events going on. We're going to do the Trump Retreat. Make and take your own scarecrows. We'll have all the stuff, so the kids can make their own scarecrows, clothes, straw, and everything. They stuff them and take them home with them. That's a great thing. We're going to have a bunch of scarecrow contests with cash prizes. Our concession stand will be open. We have a DJ, Steve with Interactive Entertainment. That's Tape Face, right?
Yes. The volume was large.
Yeah. So he comes up, and he does a lot of kids' games. We're going to have scarecrow photo ops, face painting by Chantel. She does awesome face painting. I am going to get my face painted for it. And the Arts and Scrapmobile will be there for the kids, and it's sponsored by Clay DDA. And if you guys are on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like it, because all this stuff and more is posted on there. So that concludes my supervisor's report. All right. Okay, moving right along. We don't have any unfinished business. New business. Request presence, citizen to express thoughts on no wake. Let me talk about this. It was a little over two weeks ago, right, it was right before our last meeting. City of Elginac asked me to come down and talk to them. And in there, they had three DNR officers, Sheriff Patrol, John Reed was there, two or three officials from the city. And what they're attempting to do is make from the boat ramp at Elgonac, across from the Dairy Queen, to the entrance of the Elginac Harbor, that's around that bend, all no wake. And they actually sent a resolution to the DNR to make that happen. And how the process works is they had to pass a resolution asking the DNR to actually, you know, request them to do a study. And they had to have a public hearing to do so. They had the public hearing, they had a lot of people from Russell Island over there, too, and a lot of people on Pointe de Chene and everything. They all wanted, most of them wanted it no wake. They... Then further discussion with the DNR, they said, you know, you got to get Clay Township to buy in on this, otherwise we're not going to be able to enforce it. And how the rules start, sets right now, you have the 200, 600-foot rule. In other words, if you're 26 and over, you got to be no wake, 600 feet up. And they measured the channel there, it's about 1,300. So there's about 100 feet where a 26 or bigger boat can actually throw a wake legally. Or the smaller boats, I'm sorry. The bigger boats still have to be 200 feet offshore. And so they were saying, the DNR was telling Elginac, if Clay doesn't buy into this, it's going to be hard to enforce. So they requested to me, to our board, to pass the same ordinance, and for... Or the same resolution, I'm sorry. And basically, what we'd have to do is have a public hearing and get comments, and then the board has to pass a resolution requesting the DNR to take a look at it. The DNR is going to come back here and have another public hearing for everybody, and then they would make their decision after that. So when we got wind of it, we didn't have... I wanted to actually do the public hearing, the official public hearing at this meeting, but the... We had to have it in the paper 10 days before, and we couldn't get it in the paper before. So the official public hearing is going to be at our next township meeting for this resolution, if we so do decide. I'll tell you what, I'm mixed emotions. I'm a voter, I have mixed emotions. At this meeting, I asked them, how long is this going to be for? Are we talking five years, two years, till the water goes down? They said indefinite. They want no wake the whole time. I don't know what other people, the boards feel... I don't know what the other people, the board's feeling is, but I'm a voter too. And it's, I don't know. It's, I don't know. If they, my own personal feeling is, if they enforce the present laws, they would be fine. And I get what happens on, when the boat's going down the river, especially on the turn where Pointe du Chêne is, everyone cuts it close and they get close to the shore and they get the wave speed out.
The water's up.
The water's up.
Blame God.
That's right. We have high water. And, I mean, I've been thinking about this and looking at it. And there's going to be parts of our Township, this will actually hurt, I think. Because boats are going to be on plain. And right before they slow down, I'm trying to think where Jimmy Prot lives and Golowski's and everything. You know what happens when a boat's on plain and slows down? They do this and creates a bigger wave. And those people will probably get more waves, I'm sure, from the boats actually slowing down in that area, when they're coming upstream. So I don't know if anyone has any opinions, if they want to see that area permanently no wake or not. Or if you have any drathers, or if you want it or don't want it. I had a lot of questions myself, how's this going to affect the Russell Island ferry? He's going to have to idle across the whole river.
Do we have any stats on--
Can I have an opinion?
Yeah, well, you, well, you have an opinion, you can share it.
The only thing that I'm concerned with, I think everybody can hear me, is that, number one, that's not our area.
Well, we have Russell Island, we have half the river in front of my house.
But here, if we can't take care of what we got right now, why do we keep wanting to get in farther? I mean, here, go and enforce the thing in Middle Channel, everybody be happy over there. If I had--
Ain't that bad?
If, I'm telling you, if I had a boat, I guarantee you, I would not idle it down for somebody's no wake because of the water's high right now. I'm sympathetic, I lived on the Middle Channel. I didn't like the big boats, I moved. I mean, do something about it. You know? But you, Clay Township, in my mind, cannot take care of the no wake. Why do we want to get involved with anything else? And especially with Elginac. All they're going to do is turn around and say, well, Clay Township set up is all right. And you're going to be eating that, that area. You know, but you do what you want. I mean, you guys, but you ask for an opinion, you just--
Right.
I give you my way.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, well, I don't see why the Sheriff Department isn't enforcing the 600-foot rule.
Right.
They're not enforcing the 200-foot.
I know.
And if they would just enforce it, write a ticket, then people would get the point.
Right.
But they don't. I watched a 45-footer come below my body, a sheriff's boat, and he just looked at him. I mean, and he was not 600 feet away from shore.
Well, I think that's the key thing. It all comes down to one thing. We have no marine enforcement on Harson's Island.
But we don't need it.
Yeah, well, you know, you got, you have this raft off and everybody flocks to the raft off, and you've got all the police, the fire department, et cetera, there, to take care of the outer towners that are coming in. No problem with that. But you know what? There's many, many weeks, many, many days that go by in the summer, and there's no marine enforcement on this island. And it's got to stop.
Right.
Because if the water doesn't go down, and you can't control Mother Nature-- But I guarantee you, we can control the boat wakes. And it's not that we're trying to stop people from traveling the waterways. It's not that we need additional regulations on the waterways. We've got state regulations on these waterways already. We need enforcement, period.
Right.
Now, last weekend, all of the St. Clair County boats were up shutting down the river. That's great. I think it's nice. I wouldn't personally raft off in 60 feet of water, but, you know, any more than I'd raft off out in the middle of Lake Huron. But I think that's fine. But you know what? Harson's Island needs to figure out how we're going to enforce the marine laws around this island. We've got too many miles of shoreline to have lawless. And it, you know, we're fortunate that we only kill a few people.
He's actually--
I know, I agree. But this is--
But it is lawless.
I think everyone in this room will agree that we need more enforcement. Were you guys at the high-water meeting?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
And I've complained, I've complained for the last two years in front of this audience--
Right, well--
--that we have no enforcement.
We did, we did okay against the freighters. And, and I pled out, I went to Lansing, to the county, to Washington, to get more money for local enforcement on, for the Sheriff Patrol. And I failed, I couldn't get the money.
Are we allowed to have our own law enforcement on the marine waters?
No. It's the county ordinance, they have to, we don't have jurisdiction. But it, you know, we need more enforcement. I asked the county, you have a $60 million budget. You cannot find $40,000 for more enforcement down here?
Arty, can I make a statement?
But, but this isn't about--
I understand.
This is about, do we want to make this a permanent no wake there?
Can I please make a statement?
Yeah.
Nothing was referenced to the public boat launch that is also on the other side of Elginac Harbor. There's one in Elginac, but the one on the other side of Elginac Harbor, right before the ferry.
Right.
There, that parking lot is full all the time. And these are small boats. These are people launching their boats, not expecting a 40-foot boat to come flying through the water right at them.
Right.
It's a danger zone. I live right across from it. And I see it.
I like the more the Sheriff Patrol goes. I watch them cruise out of the, out of Elginac Harbor, go right through the cut, and they're gone. Where do they go?
Well, I appreciate that, I don't know. Believe me, I'm frustrated with them, but this, I'm trying to stay on back and forth. This is, are we, do we want to make that area permanent no wake? Yes or no?
No.
No.
Okay.
I lived there.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I get it, but what we're trying to do is offer our opinion.
Right.
Right? That's all we're really doing. It's Clay Township, we're trying to offer our opinion to Elginac, and whether or not we're going to support their task of zoning that no wake. And regardless of what we do, they still have the opportunity to go ahead and try something. Doesn't mean it's going to be approved, doesn't mean it's not going to be.
But wait a minute, most of that's in Clay Township waters anyways. Elginac, just as Mariners, I mean, what's that point on--
Pointe du Chêne.
Pointe du Chêne.
Yep.
From there, there, we have Russell Island, we have Sand Island, I mean, you've got Harson's Island, you've got Elginac Harbor right after that, that's us. You don't have a lot of Elginac product.
Right, but that--
But I know they want to do the point.
Yeah, they want to do the point. And the city where their boat launches.
I've watched the rollers go four, five feet right over there.
Yep.
See it?
But--
Maybe if you got that one, then maybe they could do it somewhere else on the other island, like in the other channels, whether it be the Middle Channel or somewhere else to do that.
I mean, why don't we just have a 25 mile sound and do the whole thing? That's what you're looking at. I mean, you already got it at Deckers, you have to stop at Deckers, basically.
Right.
You crawl into Deckers.
That's basically what they want to--
And then, I mean, you're going to, you're going to speed up, stop at Elginac, okay, okay, we get past the DNR, okay, nobody can speed up again, fully got to stop again.
Right.
I mean, what's the point that everybody's going to just go around the solid channel where it's international water?
And, and the way, the way Elginac actually wrote their ordinance too, or their resolution, they said all vessels. They said all vessels, no wake. And I'm out there, you know, in their city hall, and there's a, an old guy in a 14-foot mero craft fishing, you know, walleye out there, and just, you're going to tell him, he's got to idle, you know, to go back up there? I mean, that's, that's not right either. You know, I mean, I would be for, you know, 2600 can go under the 200-foot rule.
Arty, can you remember when there was no rules?
I can.
Yeah.
I'm back in even--
And we got all this line.
I can.
But--
I just give my way sometimes.
Yeah, I just wanted--
Enforcement you have now--
Right.
Be able to enforce them.
Right, that's the, that's the thing, that's an enforcement issue. And I just want to give everyone's opinion, and I think most of the people aren't for the no wake here.
Well, there's 25 people, so, right? So why don't we just do a quick show of hands? Who would support a no wake zone? Even if we can't enforce it? Who would like to see that area go no wake?
I'll-- I'll vote for no wake.
At least try. Okay. At least try, that's all right.
Okay. And everybody else would like to just leave it alone?
The 200, 600-foot rule with more enforcement. With more enforcement.
I mean, we have to know what the-- I see the votes every day. I see the Homeland Security, I see Border Patrol coming out of there. And, yeah, everybody comes out of there, there's no need for that anymore.
Right.
Well, we did get Lieutenant Reed to start issuing some tickets.
I said--
That was a derivative of our water game, right? Send a ticket.
Yeah. I mean, I've talked blue in my face to all the county commissioners about it, to the sheriff, to Lieutenant Reed, you know. I know a lot of people have called them personally, complained about, you know, the wakes. I've heard many stories. One, my brother, you know, he's working down the North Channel, right, Mike? He's working down the North Channel on his barge, and here comes a 45-foot cruiser, 150, 100 feet off his barge, right in front of the sheriff. His barge, his crane, everything's going back and forth, and Bobby's like, I mean, they didn't even motion for him to slow down. You know? It's like, so, to your point, Harold.
Yeah, because they're not doing anything.
Right, so--
Arty, I don't think that the people are against the rules and regs, it's the enforcement that we can't do.
Right, it's the enforcement.
We've got to be honest about it.
I think 200, 600-foot rule myself is a good rule.
It's a good--
It's just not, it's just not being enforced.
We can't even enforce that.
Right.
And I've been around here a couple of days, and I've watched them come and go, and as soon as the water goes down, it's all right.
Right.
It's better. It's never all right for the people who don't like it.
Right.
You know, so, but--
All right, well, thank you for your opinions, everybody. Okay, next, item two. And we will have a public hearing at our next meeting, a more official one, on this issue. Parks and Rec, $450 music in the park. It's called Island Style, line item 208, 000961. To be reimbursed by our sponsor, Due Deck Insurance Agency and Auto Owners.
I'll make a motion to-- I'll make a motion to approve the 450-galloners music in the park for Island Style at Brownsfield, Harson's Island. The check will be received from Due Deck Insurance Agency and Auto Owners as sponsored.
Support, we did receive the check today.
All right, better yet, we have motion support. So this will actually cost the Township nothing, thanks for Due Deck Insurance. Okay, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have Police Digital Data Technology CAD Mapping. It's a maintenance agreement for $1,875, line item 207, 000768.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the digital data technology CAD mapping for $1,875 for the police department, coming out of line on 207, 00076800.
Yeah, a motion is supported, this is a budgeted item. Does anyone have any questions for Chief? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next we have the assessor is requesting the planning commission to review the errors in our zoning map on certain parcels. But this is, we have a big zoning map, and she has found errors in the map that planner has done. And a lot of these errors have gone back for quite some time. And when we adopt the zoning ordinance, we actually adopt the map as part of the ordinance. So there's, I'm not sure how many parcels, but there's a few parcels that the map doesn't coincide with what we think it should be, and what we have it on paper. I'm pretty sure there's some parcels where the map is wrong. And that is, you know, handled through the planning commission, and she's asking the board to direct me to ask the planning commission to take a look at it. I cannot direct them to take a look at it, but I can certainly ask them to take this seriously.
You don't know what parcels they are?
I do. I mean, not specifically in front of me.
Could I come in and see what they are?
Sure.
I mean, it isn't going to do any good, but, I mean, I don't know that there's any errors, that there's been a lot of planners through the 20 years that I was on the board, and I never knew what's that. And all of a sudden, we got some things, is there things going on that we don't know of?
No. Actually, what it is, is Barb's leaving us in six months, and she's cleaning up everything a little loose ends.
So what you're saying is that she screwed up, now she wants--
No. There's been errors every time. So do we, let me ask you this, John, do we continue and work with errors, or do we fix them?
Okay, but here, Arty, if I had anything to do with this, I would have presented what parcels we're talking about, so that we could be educated.
It will be at the planning commission. It's not our decision, it's the planning commission's decision. I'm just going to ask--
But if we miss one of those meetings, it could, something could go sour. I mean, there's a lot of things going on in this island that nobody tells us about.
It's the planning commission's job to write the planning, or the zoning ordinance. And we're asking them to take a look at it. All right, that's what--
But the last one we had, it took three years, I remember. We went through the county and everybody that was anybody before they passed them.
You're not on the board anymore, John.
I know.
I'll make a motion, request the planning commission to review that.
You're lucky.
Okay, we have a motion? Support. Okay, any support? Any discussion? I mean, it's not a bad idea. I'll put a list together and have it, have it ready at the desk, you know, probably next week, for people wanting to review what the--
I've seen the partial, as it was pointed out, to man the map. And really didn't see anything that impacts Harson's Island.
No.
They're very small parcel. Again, we should have the, should have had them here at some point. I'm on the planning commission, but we'll definitely--
To react to public comments when you don't know what you're talking about.
I agree.
And it upsets everybody, because, you know, I still have to say so.
Okay. We have a motion. We're not, we have motion and support. Do we have any more discussion with the board? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next we have Resolution 201724, Special Assessment for Clay Township Police.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201724, Special Assessment for Clay Township Police, 4.35 mils.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hildman?
Yes.
Arty Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes? Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufu?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have Resolution 201725, Special Assessment for Clay Township Fire District.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 201725, Special Assessment for Clay Township Fire District, 1.625 mils.
Say, hey, guys, can you just take it outside, or? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call vote please.
Kristi Hildman.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Uh, yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next we have Resolution 2017-26, Special Assessment for Garbage Refuge Curbside Recycling. I would like to make a motion that we postpone this. I'm not comfortable about passing this yet. Support. Motion and support. Any more discussion?
What, what's your point on that?
Well, I, I need more information on how they're going to rectify the situations that we've been having. I, I need more than.
Book service?
Yes.
Thank you.
And uh, and this will throw a shot across their bow for sure.
Is there anything in your current contract that would inhibit them from, prevent them from walking off the jet?
No, they got to give us a 90-day notice minimum. And for us to get rid of the contract, we have to show where they failed to fulfill the contract.
When does the current contract end?
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I, I'd have to look, it's about three years. But I, like I say, I just, I, I feel more comfortable postponing it. And uh.
Motion and support.
We have motion and support.
For how long?
Uh, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Then we'll go on and finish business, until we know.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard. Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hildman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next we have um, payment of our, our drinking water revolving fund, bond. Like I mentioned before, this bond was for, back in 2000, to pay for 62% of the water plant upgrades, uh, so we could actually bring water to Harson's Island and all the back roads, uh, back then too. So I believe we have three more years, this 17, 18, and it will be done in 19. 17, 18, and 19, it will be done. And uh, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $301,840 and 62 cents payment for the drinking water revolving fund to the St. Clair County DPW. $290,625 goes to principal, line 591, 990, 991. Interest is $11,215 and 62 cents to line number 591, 999, 995.
We have a motion, do we have support? Okay, we do have support. Like I say, this will, this, this will actually disappear in 19 and uh, that will reduce our debt load considerably. At that time, I would like to, just so everyone knows going forward, I'd like to look at replacing our very old water main that runs on M29. Basically goes from Nook, uh, down to Willow, or by where the old Cheers is, Peculiar Insurance for CPA office. So, just so the board knows. And everybody else. Because that's like 80 years old. And most of our water main breaks that we have are, is long there, so. We have motion and support, any more discussion? This is a budgeted item. Roll call vote please.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hildman.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have four member comments. Who wants to go first?
I'll go. I am looking forward to the Harson's Island turkey shoot. I have been in contact with Alfred. I guess he has something, something to do over there anyways. I'll be participating in selling tickets for the shoot, I guess, but I've been attending this ever since I've been up here in 1980.
We're looking for people to go in the dung tank.
I'll be in the dung tank, you know. I think chiefs, our chiefs should go in the dung tank. They're looking at each other, right?
And I'll, and, and be an eye to the line and commission, from the, having a depth there to the trailers, I'd like to review those contracts or the ordinances that we currently have in place and to take a look at those and see what kind of enforcement we can work with there. And again, with the abandoned structure as well, the dangerous building, see when we come up with. Cindy?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out today and discussing the no wake area. It was kind of an informal thing we decided to do at the last minute because we couldn't actually do the whole hearing here. But it's nice to see the input. Quite honestly, I'm a voter as well and kind of had mixed feelings about it all the way around. My biggest concern is, Mike had pointed out, and a few other people, is the lack of enforcement. I will say that I did have the opportunity to go over to the North Channel Yacht Club this Sunday and they drove a boat non-stop for about five hours piling into the North Channel from the lake. It was unbelievable. And I have to admit, I was amazingly surprised, the sheriff was actually there for about four of that hours and pulling people over. Whether he was writing them tickets or not, I don't know, but he was there, so I was very impressed to see that. It was probably about a four, solid four hours.
Thank you. Sandy?
I was going to share similar comments because I'm a voter as well, but my job sitting here is to represent the opinions of all of you. So it's important to me when you guys speak out and let us know what you would want, not just what I would want as a voter. Thanks for coming out and I appreciated all of the comments.
I just want to remind everybody, it is high school football season. EJV folks play In Marine City this Wednesday at 7:00 and the Varsity plays at home, First Marine City, seeking their third win in a row, Thursday at 7:00 at home.
Okay, um, I want to thank everybody for coming. I, I really like having the meetings here.
Yeah.
And uh, I appreciate everyone's candor and uh.
Hey, Marty.
We can, we can have as many as we want.
You used to be one there, one here.
We used to do four. Split it around.
We have more attendance here.
Yep.
You used to do one on the mainland and one on the island, every month.
Well, I, I know, when I first got off, it was four. We can have, we can have, let's have them all here. So anyhow.
I'd like to see a couple more meetings.
Yeah. I, I wanted to wish our intern Abby Osterland, she, she left, or she finished her internship with us, this last week and she's going off to college. I wish her a lot of luck and she likes to sound on Chris for Football Go Muskrats. I plan on going to our concert here Thursday and then as soon as it works, cross the river to the football game. And uh, we'll begin to report some scores, so. And I hope to see everybody in our Music in the Park here at 6:00 on Thursday. I'm, I'm looking forward to that event too, so. All right.
Trustee Oregan, do you know if that is going to be aired on Tailgating?
Not yet.